My name is Mike Kuvayis. I'm here to the zoning board hearing of September 11th. I think before we begin, I think we should have a moment of silence for this sacred day. Thank you. My name is Mike Kuvayis. I am the vice chair today. I'll be acting as a...I'll be acting today. I will be conducting the meeting. To my left, your right, this Charlie O'Brien, this Chin, this Ryan Bell, this Frank Finkel. In the back, I have Mr. Timmell and Jay Duke, who's from Central Services. And our clerk is next to me here, Ms. Murphy. If you have a cellphone, if you could pull it on vibrate or silence, that would be good. If you want to talk to each other, you could do it outside there because the acoustics in this beautiful room are not that good. If you're going to be testifying tonight, you're going to be doing under oath. So if you could just rise and raise your right hand. Everybody who might be coming up here. You swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth, I hope you do.
I do.
I know we have a lot of folks here today. So when you testify, you can just sort of do two things. One, not just repeat what the guy in front of you said. And two, try to keep it kind of quiet and come right up. Don't be shocking. You're going to be speaking tonight. I need a motion to waive the reading of minutes of August 21st.
The chairman, I'd like to make a motion to waive the meeting minutes of 21st.
Second.
All right.
Second. Want to say aye?
Aye.
On the whole business, matter Z-18 dash...
Oh, sorry.
Yeah, we got that. Z-18 dash 47, Simmonsville Street LLC, Shuminsville Street LLC, for a special permit variance to abolish the existing structure and elect eight townhouse residents on premises number 42 Mill Street. I have implication from the clerk that it can have to be continued after the planning board meeting. And so we'll continue this until October 23rd. Motion please, sir.
The chairman, regarding case Z-1847, I'd like to make a motion to continue the case, which is Shumins Mill Electric LLC, I'm sorry, Shumins Mill Street LLC, for special permit variance to demolish the existing structures and erect eight townhouses, residents on the premises number 42 Mill Street, to be continued until October 23rd.
Second. A motion seen on all favor.
Right. You guys have it. Home business, and this is all, 16 dash 086 C Street Quincy LLC, Robert Galligan, manager for a variance finding to amend the decision previous decision to ZDA case number 4306 and case number 08 dash 015, which required a lot to remain in common ownership on the premises number 1269 C Street. This is representative, official representative here.
Yes. Mr. Chairman and board members, good evening. For the record, my name is Christopher Harrington. My law office is located at 21 McGrath Highway in the city of Quincy, and I represent C Street Quincy LLC, the owner of property, and Robert Galligan. We are here requesting two things. We're requesting to amend the previous decisions that were issued for the Louis Restaurant Building by removing a condition, by requiring the lot and the land under the restaurant to remain in common ownership, and also to issue a parking variance for the restaurant. Obviously, because if you amend that decision and the lots are separated, then the people who...customers of Louis Restaurant will have the park on...available on-street parking spaces on C Street, as well as in the public parking lot that's located at the bottom of the hill on Fensmere Ave. So our request is two things, to amend the previous decisions and remove that condition, and also issue a parking variance for this property. Mr. Chairman, the...normally in these hearings, there's a lot of testimony given by architects, engineers, and pictures of buildings, and we don't have any of that here in this case. The Louis Building is what it is. It's not changing. We hope that we'll be able to reopen the restaurant. The restaurant suffered water damage during the storm in early March of last winter. Electrical equipment inside was damaged by the water. Took a very long time to process the insurance claim, and the restaurant has not reopened. Family would like to reopen the restaurant soon as possible. This...this case began in August of 2014. We filed an application, same as the one you have in front of you right now, to amend the decision and request a parking variance. We were asked by Council of Forest to continue that hearing. We had a neighborhood meeting on April 2nd, 2014, and we did what Council of Forest asked us to do. We continued this case for the better part of a year before withdrawing it. Council of Forest wanted this parking lot to be included in the Quincy Maritime Center proposal, something that was important to her, that she was working on. And we agreed that we would not sell the restaurant or sell the parking lot until she had a chance to put her Maritime Center plan together and put funding in place for the city to buy this parking lot. After approximately a year, nothing had happened with that, so we refiled this application in December of 2016, and this case has been continued, continued, and continued numerous times. As the abutters, I'm sure known people in the neighborhood, we ran a new legal ad and remailed notices to the abutters, just to make sure that everybody knew that this case was still active and was still alive and going to be heard. The background on this and why we're asking for this. Louis Crossing was destroyed by a fire in 1996. The original building was a grandfathered non-conforming structure, and the owner at that time applied for a finding from the Board of Appeal to rebuild the lounge and restaurant. The size of the footprint of the new building is approximately 700 square feet smaller than the original building. The Board of Appeals approved the finding to rebuild the restaurant and build a new building, subject to conditions. One of the conditions being that both the lot A and the...excuse me, Lot A where the restaurant is located and Lot B, parking lot, remain in common ownership. We're asking to remove that, as I stated. The reason why we're asking for this is because the nature of the operation of Louis has changed in the 20 years since this condition was first imposed. The business district where Louis is located has changed, and there is available legal public parking within 300 feet of this building. And the final reason is because the legal standard that we have in our ordinance today is different than it was 20 years ago when this finding was made and when this condition was imposed on Louis. Back then, you did not have a right to rebuild after a fire. Our ordinance was silent on that point. So if a person's house burned to the ground, they didn't have a right to rebuild their house. They had to go to the zoning board and they had to get a finding to rebuild that structure. When our ordinance was redone in 2011, we changed that, and we added in section 3.4.7, which deals with catastrophe or demolition. Any non-conforming structure may be reconstructed after a fire explosion or other catastrophe. This provision was missing from our old ordinance, and it was a problem. It should have been there. And that's the exact reason why it was added back in 2011, is because a person should have a right to rebuild their property after a fire. And what our provision provides is that if it's built on the same footprint and it's not any bigger than what was there before, the person has a right to rebuild. The Louisa today is not the Louis Crossing of yesterday. Louis was much more busy, an active venue, and the parking condition was imposed. Louis Crossing hosted bands and attracted many patrons for entertainment and dancing. Louis was a very popular destination. Today, Louis is enabled in restaurant and tavern. The number of customers and the number of vehicles is substantially less today than in the past. The business district where Louis is located has also changed. Louis is located in the Business B zoning district that extends from Hobbie's Walk all the way down to the Quincy Yacht Club. The business zone includes both sides of C Street and Fensmere Avenue. The business district was established by the city of Quincy decades ago because of the number of seasonal and year-round businesses that historically operated in this area. Louis and the Quincy Yacht Club and a small hair salon are the only businesses that operate in the business district today. The number of businesses in the event for business parking is significantly less today than it was in the past. With respect to public parking, within the business district, there are more than enough legal parking spaces to serve the customers of Louis and any other businesses and property owners located in the district. Parking is allowed on C Street in front of Louis, as well as from the corner down to the Quincy Yacht Club. Parking is allowed on both sides of C Street from Bayview Avenue down to the Quincy Yacht Club. Parking is allowed on Fensmere Avenue and in the public parking lot on Fensmere Avenue. All of this parking is lawful and located on public streets or lots within a 300-foot radius of Louis. Numerous restaurants located in other business districts throughout the city do not own dedicated parking lots. For example, Quincy Point, Quincy Center, Wallston Center, North Quincy, the vast majority of the restaurants in these business districts do not have their own parking lots, and their patrons park on the street, or they park in public lots located nearby. In North Quincy, all of the restaurants that are on Hancock Street and Billings Road share the Vane Street parking lot. In Wallaston, all of the restaurants share the parking that is on the street, on Beale Street and Hancock. In Quincy Center, we have the Hancock Lot. And in Quincy Point, the city purchased a piece of property on Washington Street to provide public parking for all the restaurants and businesses that are located on Washington Street and Quincy Point. I want to get back just a minute to that, the point I made about the zoning ordinance. Quincy amended its zoning ordinance in 2011, and added 3.4.7, which guarantees the right to rebuild in non-conforming fire. That section was not in the ordinance when this condition was imposed on Louis. Under the old code, the owner of Louis was not guaranteed the right to rebuild. It was required to apply to the board for a finding. The conditions that required the two lots to remain in common ownership was imposed in 1997 under the authority of the old zoning ordinance. Based on the zoning ordinance as it exists today, the owner of Louis would be guaranteed the right to rebuild. The same-sized building on the same footprint, the property owner would be allowed to rebuild without conditions. The statutory authority has changed to strengthen the rights of property owners to rebuild without the Board of Appeal approval or conditions. Based on these changes and the nature of the operation of Louis, the decrease in the number of patrons, the changes in the business district, and the availability of lawful public parking within the business district, and the changes and revisions in the zoning code, we request this relief that has been requested. We believe that it can be granted without substantial detriment to the neighborhood and without substantially derogating from the purpose or intent of the ordinance. In the packages that I handed out to you tonight, everything that I handed you tonight are documents and memos that were filed when this was first filed, almost two years ago. I mean, copies of everything on the...perhaps you might not have. But in your package, you have a copy of catastrophe and demolition provisions, section 3.4.7. You also have photographs...photographs of the corner of C Street and Bayview Avenue. You can see there's a sign right there with an arrow, "Public Parking," a sign installed by the city of Quincy. Directing people to available public parking down C Street. You can see the next photograph shows parking spaces available on the right-hand side of C Street, down as far as the yacht club. Also the sign at Bril Field, again directing people to public parking, available public parking, and the parking spaces themselves on Fensmere Avenue. The next is the assessors map of this area. You can see on the assessors map, down C Street to Fensmere Avenue, shows the parking spaces that are on the side of the field. And then you also have a copy of the zoning map for this neighborhood, and you can see the Business B zoning district begins here at the yacht club and extends all the way up...extends all the way up to Hobbie's Walk, but extends beyond it, all the way up Mr. Chairman, the point, my client wants to reopen this restaurant. He needs to sell the parking lot. Having the parking lot is assessed at about $400,000. Property taxes are a substantial burden on the business to be able to continue paying the property tax on that piece of property to be able for this business to stay open. So we're requesting that he grants the request to remove the conditions from the previous permits and grant the parking variance for this restaurant on the basis that there is public...lawful public parking located within 300 feet, located on lots within 300 feet of the front door of this business. And that section of the ordinance is in section 5, 5.1.1, parking regulations. In Business B and C districts, the required parking facilities may be provided on lots, any part of which is 300 feet away from the building to be served. The corner of Bril Field, at the corner of Fensmere and C Street, is within 300 feet of Louis' property, and so that is parking that's located on a block that's within 300 feet of Louis'. So our position is that, just like all the restaurants in North Quincy, Quincy Center, Wallaston, and Washington Street, Louis Restaurant is entitled to count available publicly-owned parking that's in the business district within 300 feet of the restaurant. Thank you.
The point that this bothers me, and it sure bothers a lot of people in this room, is the question of, you want us to give you a piece of...what might you think, a blank lot? It's a...do what you want. Tell me how would those be for the next revising?
For Louis Restaurant?
The parking lot.
The parking lot is comprised of two separate lots. Each is 5,000 square feet and 60 feet of frontage. So each one of those lots is a lawful Business B lot, 5,000 square feet, 60 feet of frontage. And a duplex, two-family residential unit is allowed in our used table by right in the Business B zoning district. And so each one of those lots is by right to have a two-family house on it essentially. So it will get sold to a developer. Nobody is going to buy the parking lot and have their grandmother sit at the entrance in a lawn chair collecting $5 bills. I mean, whoever buys it will develop it. It's absolutely assured that it will be. And so two units on each lot for a total of four is by right on that property. And it can be designed without the need for any variance or special permit. So whatever is built would have to comply with every requirement of the zoning ordinance, or they would have to come back to all of you and make their case of why they should be allowed to do something different.
Any questions?
And the same answer for the restaurant. If there's any change at this restaurant in the future, any change, we have to come back and go to this board after having issued a variance for the property.
Thank you. None at this time.
Good, thank you. Anybody want to speak in favor? In favor once, twice. Come on up.
Hi, my name is Patty Williams. I live in Hausneck. It's a wonderful community, and one of the things that we're lacking at the moment is a restaurant. We've had a restaurant there for many, many years. It's a wonderful asset to the community, and as I look at, you know, the options available, we can lose a parking lot and keep a restaurant, or we can lose both. And in my mind, I mean, if the city were very concerned about what was going on that lot, they could have purchased it. They opted not to. In my mind, if we're going to lose the lot anyway, let's lose it, but let's keep a restaurant in a community that really desires to have a local restaurant. Thank you.
I'm DJ Davis, owner, raising Hausneck. Live on Hooper Street, I was born on Hooper Street. My parents are from there, my grandparents are from there, my brothers live there, my daughter, my son. It's a wonderful watering hole. It would be an asset to our community to keep it. It's a gathering point for everybody in the neighborhood. It's wonderful for the community. It's one of the last remaining commercial spots that we have in the area. It would be a great thing to have and keep it. They've been there forever. My mother and father used to go there and dance years ago. The dance hall is long gone, but the place is still there. It still draws the same crowd. It's just a neighborhood place. It doesn't...it's on the end of the peninsula. It has no food traffic. Most...a lot of the traffic is foot traffic comes there, really doesn't deal with a lot of cars, although people do drive there and hang around here. But people come up to the yacht club, there'll be a function at the yacht club, people generate up there, there'll be a function at Louis', people generate back to the yacht club. It's a community spot. Been there all my life. I'll be there till the day I die.
Thank you.
Hi, my name's Carrie Boyge. My family farm is owned by Louis', and I've been going there since I was first born. I'll continue to go there even without a parking lot because I can walk there. I can also Hooper there, and I can take my boat there. This is a really big consideration for me. We have missed Louis terribly. The current owners have done a wonderful job in the food and in really supporting our neighborhood. There's constant Cub Scout stuff there. Man, it's...my brother lost his house last year, and John Galligan ran a wonderful benefit there. So I really hope you'll consider this. It's a big asset to our community. Thank you.
Hi, Jody Gernstrom. I live on Wall Street. I've been living in Hausneck my whole life. Louis is great. It's a great place to go. We walk there as well. We could also go by boat. There are no other small businesses, almost none, left in our small community. Family-owned, family-run. John Galligan and his family have supported a lot of part-time people there within our community to make their ends meet. It's just a place...great place to go, and it's a great place to eat. It's a lot of fun. Thanks.
Hi, I'm Suzanne Condon. I live on Hausneck. I'm a relative newcomer. I've only been there 30 years, so I know I'm not a Necker, but I feel like I know a lot about Neck. In any case, I can tell you that many of us have enjoyed going to Louis' as a restaurant, neighborhood restaurant, for many years. It's been particularly noticeable since the March storm. I can't tell you how many times I walked through our neighborhood and people are just saying, "We never get to see anybody anymore. The place where we all went together is no longer there." It's unfortunate that just a few months ago, city council elected not to even vote on the city's proposal to buy the parking lot, which would have served the Maritime Center, the yacht club, Louis', and any other business in that area. So be it. It didn't happen. But I sort of feel like if the choice is, you know, we don't have a place to go, if the owners of the restaurant can't afford to keep both places, then I absolutely support buying this lot so that we can continue to have a place to go in our neighborhood, and restaurant is a great place. Thank you.
What you go, tell us your address.
I ask, is Lennox Street. I did that. Thank you.
Anybody else who wants to speak?
Hi, my name's Melissa Capadona. I'm with 48 SEAV, Hausneck. I moved to Hausneck in 2014 from Metro West, Marlboro, Mass. I've met 99% of all of my friends from Louis'. We came in, we've met John Galligan, all of our attenders, waitresses. My two-year-old has met all of his preschool friends there. It's really been a wonderful sense of community. Just bringing back the March storm, many people didn't have power, electricity, food, water. People were put out from their homes, and John Galligan opened up the restaurant, served everybody, anything they needed to eat or drink, gave people a dry place to go. And it's with...being away from your family, I live about two hours...my family's about two hours away, I have to say, it was a really wonderful thing for him to do. Just shows the type of a general manager that he is. I will say that the parking, it's a big concern to the neighborhood, but the 99% of the neighborhood, or I should say, the old-school part of the neighborhood, doesn't want to see any type of change anyway. So Louis isn't the only issue. Nobody wants the Maritime Center. Nobody wants the PL change. So I will tell you, I live on SEAV, probably, you know, less than a four-minute walk to Louis', and I don't see the traffic or the parking being an issue. All of the public parking is vacant all of the time. So since Louis hasn't been open, really, all of the lots, nobody's been in them unless there's a baseball game or people are down at the yacht club. So there really has been a big vacancy in the general area of the neighborhood. So I'm all for it. I'm also an entrepreneur, and it would be a shame to see the restaurant go away and see all condos or all homes go into that area.
Sir Kelly?
Needing to Rock Street. Like my Quincy resident transplant to Hausneck a couple of years ago, I have to say that moving into Hausneck was...it's been one of the best moments of our life and helping with being with...having Louis around was one of the kind of catalysts for our family to go to a place, meet all the neighbors and the Galligan family, John and his family were fantastic. And going through what Hausneck went through last winter was pretty brutal, though, the storms and, like she said before me, John was fantastic, trying to help people the way he could. And I just think that Louis is, as you just said, regarding the parking piece and all that, leave that up to you guys. We just...I just really feel that this community needs Louis at this time.
Patrick Elmer, 58 Bayview Avenue, another transplant from Illinois. Much like Melissa, Louis is the place where I met everybody here in Hausneck. Great, small business, good place for people of all ages to go. Living on Bayview, I've never seen parking be an issue. As I said, the lots are usually sitting there empty. Definitely for divisions, anything that we can do to keep Louis alive. Really feel like it's trademark place in the neighborhood, and it's a better place when that place is open. So definitely for it.
Anyone else want to speak in favor?
Good evening, everyone. I'm John Galligan, 40 Cogdy Street, general manager of Louis'. I stepped in probably about...I've been there for about five years. I stepped in maybe about three years ago to really take the reins of the restaurant. Unfortunately, my father had to remove himself. You know, at that point, you know, my wife, my family, and I made a decision to really try to, you know, keep this restaurant going, keep it in the neighborhood. And we made strides over the last couple of years to, I think, really bring it back to a place that Hausneck can call a second home and come to and enjoy. You know, I've heard a lot of things over the last few months, which, you know, some of them hurt because a lot of social media and things these days, people think they can throw whatever they want out there. But, you know, my goal moving forward is to always see Louis remain a restaurant. You know, understanding that, you know, going forward, parking could be an issue. going forward, parking could be an issue. But I think that if the right people are in and around that restaurant and it's handled properly, that people will come. You know, I don't ever want to see, you know, I just don't ever want to think about people in the neighborhood not having a place to go. I'd like to continue to see that moving forward. You know, it's been a long time coming to this point. We hope, you know, different things did happen in the past. They didn't, but here at this point now, so I hope you guys really consider, you know, the subdivision and what it means to have a place like Louis'. If it was your community, how you would feel about not being able to walk down the street to a restaurant, not being able to go down to a place that you called a second home for a long time, and not being able to see your family grow up and do that as well. I think it's very important in the neighborhood. I think it's very important that we continue to have it down there. And losing the parking lot is one thing, but losing the restaurant, you know, would be, I think, horrible for the community. So I've always just kind of looked at it as the important part of that business was the side of the street that was able to bring in money. And that was the business side. And, you know, if we have to sacrifice the parking lot side to be able to remain a business, then that's what we have to do. So I hope you guys consider, you know, all the good things you've heard tonight as well and that we can, you know, come to a good agreement tonight.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Anyone else in favor? Once, twice? There's a correspondence here.
Mr. Chairman, I have two emails.
Both in opposition?
Yes, in opposition.
Okay, like, last call for in favor. Call that part of the meeting over.
Mr. Chairman, first correspondence is from Thomas Morris, dated today at 12:51 PM. Dear zoning board, I may or may not be able to attend tonight's hearing regarding Louis' parking lot. I write this letter in opposition to dividing the lot from the restaurant for two reasons, parking and traffic. Louis is a 96-seat restaurant requiring 24 legal parking spots. If this variance finding is approved, it will cause a detrimental effect to the neighborhood and the Hausneck Peninsula. As you know, C Street is the only road in and out of Hausneck and it narrows to two lanes from the Willows to the Quincy Yacht Club. Eliminating customer parking spots and burdening city roads and streets in the area not only adds congestion, but puts public safety at considerable risk. With the recent city and state approval of a regional Maritime Center and the addition of a 150-seat function hall at the yacht club, traffic congestion will increase exponentially in this densely populated neighborhood. I respectfully ask that this letter be read into the record and made part of the public hearing. Thank you, Thomas Morris, 100 Bayview Ave. Second correspondence, dated today at 5:15 PM, is from Margaret La Forest. Dear Chairman Akins, I write in opposition to the application of Louis' restaurant before the zoning board tonight and apologize that I am unable to attend. When I first held the neighborhood meeting regarding the proposed subdivision and development of four condominiums on the parking lot parcel, I was personally opposed, not wanting more condos in this primarily residential A neighborhood. A neighbor suggested the city's consideration for acquisition and many in attendance agreed. In looking throughout the city, there are many businesses that share parking with municipal and residential uses and this neighborhood could use additional parking. I supported this solution and still do even now. I postponed many ZBA votes for the subdivision until the city could gain control, as I have been and still am, opposed to it being separated for non-ancillary use. When development was proposed for the Bayswater Boatyard, neighbors were opposed and supported the city acquiring it for public use, albeit minimally used as boat storage. It protected the parcel until a future opportunity for better public enjoyment can be realized. The cobblestone property, abutting the Our Lady of Good Counsel Church, is another that comes to mind that's been purchased and remains minimally used to open space. And of course, so many other properties in Hausneck, most notably The Crusher. Hausneck is able to maintain the 1950s America atmosphere because of the commitment of our neighborhood, of our neighbors, in being able to unite for the betterment of community. Having a family restaurant in Hausneck has been vital to the neighborhood's culture and has been missed by many since the March storm. The vote this evening doesn't guarantee the restaurant use continues and any subdivision vote should understand the parcel's intended future use. As this remains unknown, I am opposed to the subdivision as presented. Sincerely, Margaret La Forest.
Anybody who wants to speak, opposed or on the side? Can I step up? Form a line like the other folks, that would be nice.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, I don't expect to be a popular guy here tonight.
But mind you, that helps who you are with your presence.
My name is Michael Chaney. I reside at 75 Palmer Street. I'm here representing my father, Palmer Chaney, my mother, Barbara Chaney, my sister, Kathy Chaney, who are abutters, living in 12 C Ave. Let's try to read the statement. Something comes to mind. First, I want to commend John. He brought up some of his friends and I think that speaks to his character that he has earned a reputation as a good guy in Hausneck and a good fireman. And to that end, I wish him, I wish him much success. But I'm not here to be popular. Because we're not here to be popular, are we? We're here because of the law. Right? We're here to uphold zoning act. So what is the zoning act? Well, the preamble to the zoning act tells us several things. The first of which is, is the purpose of the zoning board of appeals is to protect a community, its public safety in this particular case. I don't know, I don't really, I'm not asking that you buy a show of hands, but I'm assuming that you've all been down to Louis', that you've all seen Louis, the parking lot, what's out front. I can tell you, when I listened to Trini Hamilton, there's parking on both sides of C Street going down to the yacht club. There's not parking on both sides of the street, C Street. Had I known that was going to be part of the testimony, I would have provided the zoning board of appeals, and I still can, with earshot shots, showing you how fire trucks couldn't get down there because it was a car parked on the side of the street and another abutting car coming up. My parents live a stone's throw from there. That means an ambulance couldn't get down there. There is no parking on C Street. You park a car there, it blocks the lane. So how can the zoning board of appeals issue a variance for parking when there is none? I now know why, that there was no engineering provided. If you're looking for a variance, wouldn't you provide the zoning board of appeals, the decision-making authority, with a piece of paper that says, "Here is a scant engineer plan that shows where the parking is"? I haven't seen that presented because you cannot park on C Street. People do. Some of them park on the sidewalk. But that's not what's in the best interest of the city. It's not what's in the best interest of Hausneck. It really isn't. The 24 parking spaces are critical to that business operating. Critical. It provides much-needed off-street parking. Suggest that someone is going to walk 150 to 200 yards down the street. And I don't know if you're familiar with the parking that they're talking about. I created it when I was the city councilor. It is for the ball field. I have never seen anybody park down there and walk up to Louis'. It's not practical. It's not going to happen. What is going to happen is they will continue to park on C Street right around the corner where you'll be blocking the fire truck or an ambulance, for sure. It's actually happened several times and throughout the neighborhood. That's what's going to happen if this is a lot. This lot is a lot to subdivide. The owner of Louis applied to reopen the restaurant. The city of Quincy's zoning board of appeals and the community have been holding several meetings in a public hearing, they issued a variance. However, they placed a condition on the variance. The new owner must keep the parking lot as part of the restaurant. The ZBA made it clear they could not subdivide the lot as long as the restaurant was in operation. After listening to the neighbors and the abutters, the public hearing, the ZBA concerned that the patrons of the restaurant would be forced to find parking nearby neighborhood. After a little discussion of the parking, once it was agreed upon by the owner that he would agree to keeping the parking lot as part of it, the variance was granted based on that one thing. Based on that one thing. The same thing they're asking to reverse tonight. That was after several meetings. After the application was submitted to C Street LLC, we reversed the community, the ZBA agreement and the neighborhood felt somewhat betrayed. We all agreed the lot would remain part of Louis'. So what changed? The owner stated in a public meeting last year that he was in financial hardship and needed to separate the lot to build condominiums. The community whole supports having a restaurant with a liquor license at that location. Louis has been there for 60 years and gone over 60 years and has three owners. It's become our own version of Cheers, where everyone knows your name. We want it to survive. We want it to prosper and we love it. Decision taken by the zoning board of appeals to divide the parking lot from the owner in current use will cause Louis to be in direct violation of city ordinances, not the one that was applied for for a variance, the city ordinance 5.1.2, and could cause Louis, as a restaurant, to close. City ordinance is 5.1.2. Ownership or control of off-street parking. Off-street parking facilities shall be under the same ownership and control as the building or buildings which they serve, where a certificate of occupancy has been issued conditioned to the maintenance of off-street parking facilities. Such certificate of occupancy shall lapse in the event of a sale or conveyance of the land used for such parking facility for the required parking. What that says is, you voted, Louis must close. That's what the ordinance says. It must not survive, cannot survive if you separate the lot. Now, I haven't heard anybody apply for a variance, so I'm not so sure, to be honest with you, that 5.1.2. Just think about this for a minute. The people who control the zoning in the city of Quincy, the city council and the mayor, put this in in 2011. They put this in. It had to become a serious, serious problem and a major issue of concern for someone to pull this out and put this in as an ordinance. And here we are today with exactly, exactly the situation that this ordinance says you can't have. In addition to that, you know, I used to always say, when I came before the zoning board of appeals in fairness to the applicant, the zoning act again states that you have to show a hardship. I haven't heard a hardship. I have not heard one hardship. The restaurant was there, it was operating for 65 years, had a parking lot across the street for 65 years. Not a problem. Gone through three partners, not a problem. All of a sudden, there's a problem. What's the problem? Well, we stayed in a public meeting and broke. I need the money. And I just want to remind people that when the money's gone, because we did see in the newspaper, it's not me, we saw in the newspaper, that there's substantial debt. And I feel bad that he has substantial debt on the property. But when the money's gone, then what? We're right back here again. Right? So that's the reason why zoning exists. And I have a number of court decisions here that say that hardship is not financial hardship. It is not personal hardship. It must go with the land. Just to go through some of them. No hardship has been shown. Hardship that results from personal circumstances may not be the basis for granting a variance. The board is looking at the nature of the property, the land use ordinances, not the nature of the applicant and the circumstances. Bringing an elderly parent, for example, to live with the family, for example, is changing personal circumstances, not particular to the property. Well, it is settled. Substantial hardship must be related to the land itself, specifically soil conditions, shape and topography, issues also with the support of a variance is not merely personal to the landlord. And it says, it's a court case, Lyden versus the Tom. Although financial hardship is an appropriate consideration in this context, the board should not and cannot consider personal financial situation of the landowner, applicant. In other words, it's irrelevant whether the current owner cannot afford to use or develop the land unless he has a variance in the soil shape, topography, conditions of land must be such that would affect the owner financially. A landowner's desire to maximize his profits from his land also does not qualify as substantial hardship. And it goes on, and I'm going to submit this to the zoning board of appeals. It gives the actual cases. And there are a lot of cases in land court of people who did exactly the same thing as being done here. I'm broke. I need to take some action. Subdivide the land, put an addition on the roof. I know I'm violating, I go before the zoning board of appeals. What's the reason? I'm broke. You cannot do that. That's against the laws. It's not what the intent of the zoning act was for. The intent of the zoning act was to protect us. What I contend to you in a conclusion is that this is not right. It's wrong, unnecessary, and it shouldn't be before the zoning board of appeals. It violates the very reason that we have a zoning board of appeals, public safety. Thank you very much.
Anyone else opposed or on the side?
It's a small community, obviously. He's not part of it.
Please, stop. No, 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 don't do that. Don't make this night any longer, please.
Hi, my name is Julie Fry. I live at 40 C Avenue, which is just up the hill from Louis'. And I'm here in opposition of separating it. Even before the multiple votes have come up, as a neighbor and someone who drives by that every day to go home and to leave my home, I started monitoring the traffic situation. And when Louis was open and people were there, people were parking on C Street, which would have to cause us to swerve out around their cars and hope that nobody was coming towards us. And it made it really unsafe. And that was when they had the 24 parking spots. If they lose those 24 parking spots, like the last gentleman said, people will not go park at the park and walk out. They'll continue to park on C Street and we're going to be faced with what we call Hausneck chicken, which is, can you get before, in front of the car before the next car gets past you? It's unsafe and if you allow this property to be separated, it will be even more unsafe. In addition, I know this should not, the hardship should not have anything to do with this, but if you do separate it and people have a harder time to park, you're going to have even fewer customers, which is going to exacerbate his financial situation because he's going to have even fewer customers. And so I think for multiple reasons and for the safety of all of us who are driving in and out and the neighbors, I'd really encourage you to make sure that the lots stay together. I think.
Anyone else? Line up over here, it'd be really nice.
I'm her sister. My name is Renee Fry. I live at 40 C Avenue as well. And first and foremost, for me, safety And first and foremost, for me, safety is the number one concern. My son is here this evening with the playground being right there. I can tell you that we also, you know, we're sisters, we've been counting the parking. And I think people have suddenly forgotten, because the lot's been closed for so long, how that lot was full every night, how that lot also caused others to park into the parking lot next door where all the boats are supposed to be. And so when we'd go by, I would say, six out of seven nights, and we used to count this every night and walk the dog, that lot was full as well with Louis' customers. And so now to expect those customers to go to where the children are, where the park is, and I just don't think that's something I can say that's safe. Also, I can tell you that I served in the cabinet of Governor Romney as the Secretary of Economic Development, and he's called Business and Technology Director. But I can tell you that never once, over three hundred and fifty-one communities, did anyone ask to have parking taken away, because most of the time, we had to deal with, who can get parking? How can we get parking? How can we help these communities? There was never one time something saying, I can stay in business if you just take away my parking. So I think that's where we serve. And then second, I have to tell you too, while these people are wonderful and they're great neighbors, there is no guarantee that Louis will stay in business. So we've heard lots of nice things from lots of nice people, but there is no guarantee that this man will stay in business or be here in six months and that we won't be back. Because without parking, he won't have customers and will be watching us and him sell the restaurant next for more houses. Thank you.
Anyone else? Please don't be shy.
Good evening. My name's Dave Warner. I live at forty-five Turney. Do you honor a street? House next, lived here all my life. Louis is one of the restaurants that I went to when it was first opened. I think it's a fantastic establishment, but I am totally, totally against the parking lot given away to another developer. I think we definitely need parking for Louis. I think it'd be a shame, it would cause utmost safety problems in the area. Once again, thank you very much.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, my name is James McCaffrey. I reside at ninety-second Clark Street in House Neck. And I, no one necessarily is for or against the parking lot exactly, but I think one of the letters I read earlier is the use of the property. I don't want to see it become condos. I don't think anybody in the neighborhood really wants to see condos. But I'm hoping that there's still a viable option that was mentioned a couple of years ago, and that's the city buying it. So I think in one of the letters, it mentioned the possibility of delaying this meeting or proceedings for a while, so that the city council can reconsider the options. I don't know if it's viable, but that's where I stand. I'd hate to see a vote tonight that set everything in gold when we have an opportunity to possibly reconsider the options that were presented at previous meetings or council meetings. So, thank you.
I'm asking two-six Child Street. And I said, I'm not for or against, sort of, I love Louis, I love people that run it. I think it's great. Don't want to say go. But like somebody mentioned before me, in six months, who's to say they're going to be there? I'm not convinced that's the plan. And so you said, well, whether it's condos or not, who's going to buy Louis? There's no parking lot, and maybe not going to be a restaurant. What's it going to be? I mean, I want Louis to stay. I've been there my entire life, family. I think John is going to have an awesome job. It's just not for splitting the lot, which I get it both ways, but we can't, right? So, thank you.
Anyone else?
I have to speak. John Rutherford, six-two Grandwall Road. I am not from House Neck, nor have I, never been to Louis, so I want to disclose that. But I have seen Mr. Galligan come up many times for the license board. He asked to have a tent, you know, to have even more people come. So if you were to grant this, it would be hard to do those events later. So the way I look at this, it'd almost be good for us to set up like a GoFundMe page and help save Gallagans, okay? Then to split up that lot, because by you doing that, the way, you know how we prevent condos from being there? By you not allowing this to happen. I mean, Mr. Harrington, I'm sorry, even though you say four, I'm thinking they might come back and say, we're going to have sixteen or twenty there, okay? So I don't even agree with what he was saying on the zoning either. Five thousand square feet on a lot with sixty feet of frontage, I'm not sure on a five thousand square foot lot if you have those rights. I thought a lot size has to be seven thousand, six hundred and fifty square feet. But the bottom line is that either continue this, like Mr. McCaffrey said, or vote no. Thank you.
My name is Dan Jacob. I live at sixteen Turney Street, House Neck, lifelong rhythm. Just about Louis parking lot situation. I think, again, the parking on C Street, that's just ridiculous to think that this parking spot's there. You know, as far as, you know, parking down at Fensmere and on C Street on an S curve, you're going to have a really hard time seeing one end of the street from Louis because it goes down and turns to the right, so you're never going to be able to see the cars down the other end and come the other direction. Also, once the Maritime Center opens, you know, you're going to be having boats with trailers, you know, going through that same road, you know, so you're going to have to cop the park there, it's going to be an issue. Just at the Chowder Fest the other day, they allowed parking on the street, parking lot's closed. But there was an issue there, they had four cars just at that S curve directing traffic, the Jeff Deal bus was in the way. It was all oversized, but it was parked on the street there. People had to park on the, they also only parking on one side of the road. Mr. Harrington saying that's parking on both sides of C Street, which would not be possible because you wouldn't be able to get a bicycle down the road. But basically, I mean, you know, you're really going to have a hard time getting any type of emergency vehicle down the street. The other thing is too, in my employment, I deal with this constantly, yesterday is Coops, which is a very similar area to what we're looking at. You know, there's neighbors there, talk constantly about parking, you know, and noise, but mostly parking, can't get down their street. You know, there's also lots of issues on buildings. You know, I know they have the Bain Street parking lot, but buildings in Hancock is full of restaurants. So they have lots of double parking there for, you know, an hour and a half at a time. So there's lots of issues going on there, but, you know, like you said, I think if you allow these people to park on the street, you're going to have a lot of problems. Just there's no way to move the traffic down the road. So, there you have it.
Councilor, do you have the last word?
Yes. Thank you. David McCaffrey, forty-eight Whitney Road, one-one council. Just to start off, you know, I know how the neighborhood feels about Louis. When I grew up as a kid, I grew up at twenty-nine C Avenue. And hobbies and hurleys down there were bustling with their rentals, and it was very busy. And as Mike Chain stated, the parking lot was there then in support of Louis. One of the things that I noticed last year, and probably the year before, with Louis and the Maritime Center, we started to talk about the need for parking. It was the Maritime Center that kind of jod the question of the city buying Louis for additional parking. From the get-go, I didn't think it was necessary. The Maritime Center, as we know it, is not there yet. The design is being re-looked, along with the parking lot that will support the Maritime Center that's there with trailers and et cetera. And I think it's going to be adequate. I don't think Louis parking lot was going to make a bust, the Maritime Center, which was the reason that Louis came up in front of the city to be bought. So with that said, it came before us and rubber rules, parliamentary procedure, we didn't have to take a vote, we had to make a motion to bring it out because it had been approved in a bond, and it didn't happen, so it died. So with that said, the parking lot was off the table with the city. Now, growing up at twenty-nine C Avenue, I'm very familiar with Bayview Ave, Homestead, Crosby, all the surrounding streets. If Louis was to split this up, parking lot being developed or whatever, and the restaurant not having parking, those congested neighborhoods, and it's pretty packed down there, would just be inundated with cars during the summer months, during the spring months, and the fall. When we come to winter, which we know we're in New England, and it comes pretty quick, as we're all finding out, there's no parking at all on any of the streets when it comes to snow, snow removal. It would be a horror show without a parking lot tied to Louis. The Brill Field option is way too far away. Whoever, if they did end up with a restaurant there, the restaurant wouldn't make it. There wouldn't be any place to park. I don't think Howard could survive, even with the locals that walk there, without having some type of parking. I'm in full support of leaving it as one parcel, that the restaurant needs that parking lot to survive. I was hoping by now that possibly there'd be an agreement with someone to come in to buy the restaurant and the parking lot. I'm rooting for Louis, just like everyone else. I was born up with, born with it, and I know the neighborhood very well. But it's been closed for seven months now. It's a concern. As the young lady who just said here, I don't know what happens if this decision goes tonight to split it in regards to Louis. The lights in the beer doesn't start flowing just because of this decision tonight. It might stay dark still. I don't know. I'm hoping for the best for the Gallagans, but my full support, and I hope the zoning board really takes a good thought about this, because it is different than where it's located in a congested neighborhood, that they leave it as one parcel, because the restaurant needs that parking. Without the parking, there will be turmoil in regards to parking in all the side streets, along C Street, which is hazardous now, especially in the wintertime. And Brill Field to me is just not a fact, that people aren't going to go all the way down there and then walk a couple hundred yards back. So that'll leave you, but I am in full support of leaving it the way it is, parking lot and restaurant. Thank you.
Does anyone else, though usually should come up and report?
I'm sorry, I have a seat because I might right knee beside a grapefruit. I just didn't want to stand in the line. Please forgive me. Please also forgive, I'm working off a note, switching on my smartphone, and I've got old man, so it comes to my eyes.
We all do.
So please, so I hope, I look forward to your time consideration. Bill Zamsal, three fifty-six Washington.
I live at the point where I've been out on the neck, I've been to Louis, I've seen what my daughter used to play soccer out in Brill Field, and I can tell you it's a nightmare. As regards to what's been discussed tonight, with all due respect to those private citizens speaking on behalf of Louis, none of them have said anything legally germane to your deliberations. As for the Gallagans, they ask, there are a few major problems. My understanding is that the parking requirements is care of a cabaret use sort of license. I could be wrong, but that's my understanding, people have been around for a long, long time, dating back to previous on earth. No ask was made here to change to put a regular restaurant license if my understanding is correct. Now, if such a change was asked, that would change your deliberations, but that was not done. And if there is a cabaret license, and it would continue going forward, if you were to sever that part of the property, you could have cabaret license and higher parking. My understanding is higher parking would work. Next, parking comments by attorney Harrington did not include metrics. This is a problem, a huge problem. For example, Billings Road venue has its own parking, public parking nearby, but it was denied permit. I know there are a lot of factors involved with it, that it was denied, it's my understanding, litigation's in works. Parking requirements vis-à-vis the restaurant exist, the ratios, that sort of thing. And surely Mr. Dukin can advise you already, say, disregard the ask before you. Take advantage of him. That's what he's paid for. He's inspectional service man, and he knows his Josie is no longer around, and he knew this stuff upside down, sideways, forwards.
Yeah, hey you.
An afterspin. After spinning around three times.
Sir, can you spin it up so we can hear you back?
I'm finished, I'm sorry. I guess the mic, we don't have a mic tonight. Thank you for your time. You coming up the seat, sir?
Yes.
All right. Anybody, this is going to be the last, this is the last one, and I'm going to pull this part of the hearing over.
Well, probably the oldest, so.
The best looking.
Okay, I grew up in House Neck. My brothers before me. Twenty-nine Rogers Lane, House Neck.
What's your name?
Carriels. Now, I'm hearing all these stories, and they're all nice, and Gallagans, I've known them all, all my life. I grew up with their, their parents, okay? Duck lands with them, did all that stuff, even loved them for Louis, went Diana. And I, I just can't understand how they can separate these parcels of land. That would be like me going up there, I own apartments, that's that. Oh, I got six parking spaces over behind my house because I have to have it. So my apartments, I had four apartments. That's when it was a car and a half. I don't know how I get half a car, but a car and a half, now I don't know, four apartments. And then they have to, car and three quarters. But I could come up here, what they're doing, and say, okay, I got hardships, I'm raising my grandchildren, I've had them since they were babies, they're going to the college now, and I've got all kinds of bills to pay. And I'll say, come up and file for a variance and say, well, I can put two more apartments on the end of my buildings and get another $2,000 worth of rent, help my kids out, my grandchildren, and that I'm raising. Okay? So I really see, you know, how they can keep changing the laws and coming up for variances and all of this stuff, when the law is already set. I mean, I like the, John's a real nice guy. And like I said, I grew up with their father and their uncle, and so I've been down there, and my parents owned their land since nineteen forty-two. And my parents were down there before me. They'd be a hundred and nine now, if they were still alive. So I just can't see, there's so much overtrawling, no place for parking, and everyone looks at my land. I got runs every single week wanting to buy my land, because I have green space, I have parking for my tenants, off-street parking for my tenants, they don't have to worry about being up C Street and, you know, a snowstorm comes up and they have no place to put their cars. I have extra parking, I have green space, we're right to put another twelve cars. So I really can't see how they can keep doing this and changing laws, you know? I'm against it. So just see what package deal. And I came up here, I don't know how many years ago, and I've been up here several times, and I just stopped coming up because everything changed. So, you know, if you have a business and they went up and they think, I have some other issues besides this, but this is the one that's in hand, okay? So if you buy this restaurant and you come up, and one of the main things are, you have twenty-four spaces of parking for the patrons. Can't see how you can take it away and tell them, park the public property. And they use the parking lot right beside, which is actually for residential, for recreation. Because I was a trainer of the Housing Maritime Center, and I spent, what, fifteen years to try to get that building. We finally got it, we had a new setup, we had all kinds of things going down there. And now the city's taking over, and they're doing a good thing, I think. We'll see. But I just can't see how you can just give them the variance, eighteen, give away the parking that they desperately believe need. You, they said down there, you can go and walk three hundred feet in the winter. People as young as me, you know, want to walk three hundred feet in the winter in the snow, and that's enough to develop and get a sandwich or a meal? I don't think so. So I think it's essential that you keep it just, or maybe I'll be up here next weeks, next month, and I said, I got plenty of land, that I could come up for a meal and show off.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Once, twice, three times to call it part of the hearing over.
Mr. Chairman, if I could have one minute for a rebuttal. Mr. Chaney cited section 5.1.2 of the, of our ordinance. Section 5.1.1, which is a section I spoke to you about, required off-street parking facilities shall be provided on the same lot as the principal use they're required to serve with the following exceptions. In business B and C, the required parking facilities may be provided on lots, any part of which is three hundred feet from the building to be served. The first section creates an exception for properties that are in business B and business C districts, and this property is. The following section quoted by Mr. Chaney about off-street parking being on the same ownership and patrol is not applicable. It doesn't apply because this is accepted from that rule in the paragraph immediately above it. Also in that section 5.1.2, it says, where a certificate of occupancy is the issued conditional. We don't have a certificate of occupancy issued conditional on the maintenance of a parking lot. We have a zoning board decision, and you're the zoning board, and you have the authority to amend it, rescind it, do whatever you want for a decision that this, this board issued twenty years ago. We submit to you, one final point. I stated there was parking lot on both sides of C Street. I understand that in front of Louis, if you had cars parked on both sides of C Street, it would be a huge problem. I was speaking of after you pass Louis, where the road widens up, after you go, as you're heading down the hill toward Quincy Yard. And as far as Fensmere Avenue goes, that is, that is legal, publicly owned parking. And it's there, and there's no question it's there, the photographs prove it's there, the city's own records prove it's there. It's publicly owned parking, it's located within three hundred feet of this building, and we're asking for this restaurant to be treated exactly the same as every other restaurant in the city. If we applied section 5.1.2 as Mr. Chaney says we should, then every restaurant in the city would have to close, because they're all counting public parking spaces that are with. that are within 300 feet of their front door.
I just want to tell everybody that the zoning board, part of the reason why the zoning boards exist in Commonwealth is because the law is not a, well, we haven't been replaced with computers yet. And I can see a time when we'll say, here's the zoning code and stick it to the machine, and this is what someone wants, and the machine will spit out the answer that we know need for a zoning board. But one of the big reasons why there are zoning boards in cities in town in the Commonwealth is to take these step-by-step, case-by-case issues and add some local insight to them. That's what we're requiring here tonight.
I think it's a little difficult to have a chair. I usually ask the other members what they think before I actually say what I think. So I'm going to start way down at the end. Mr. Frankel.
Parking is a problem. Parking is a problem. Parking is a problem everywhere. Parking is a problem everywhere. Not just Hausneck. It's everywhere. And business is growing in Quincy, and it continues to be a parking problem. I agree to some extent, there's no guarantee that Louis stays open or ever opens again. But that just means that you're going to have more apartments and more condos. I do take Mr. Galligan and his word that they want to reopen. I think that this, fortunately, I wasn't here in 1996. I think that this was a bit of an onerous decision holding up this piece of property so that someone could rebuild a building that burned in a fire, where they wanted to build it smaller than it was. That, that leaves a bad taste in my mouth, and that's sort of what I'm chewing on right now.
Yeah, I mean, you know, not to reiterate points made by both sides, but I think over, as Jeff mentioned, all over the city, we're facing parking issues. I do take Mr. Galligan on his word that he does want to reopen. I think it's been a community asset. I imagine if they had the opportunity to sell the place as a whole with the adjacent parking lot, that somebody would have bought it by now if that was to ease their financial burden. So obviously, it's not palatable to somebody else with both the parking lot and the business. So, or somebody doesn't view it as profitable. So, you know, I'm leaning towards saying, you know, this is the best opportunity for this community to keep their restaurant. And that's kind of how I feel right now.
Thank you. I haven't had a ton with the logic of removing parking from a restaurant when every meeting that I've been to on this board, parking has been an issue, and there isn't enough of it, and, and we need more. And to take it away from the business that I think needs it. And the community needs the parking too. I mean, you've talked about having C Street blocked and that being a safety issue. It's just hard for me to say that we should take, harden away from the business. I'm having a problem with that.
The way that I look at it is the considerations that are in there. You have seasonal considerations, when bolts are there and they're not there in the municipal lot that's there. The weather considerations, whether there's snow or there's, I mean, there's, there's a lot of ifs and factors that are in there. And the circumstances today, people going to restaurants, where everybody change. People use Uber today. If you have a few drinks, you're not going to drive your car. You're going to call an Uber, or you're going to walk or call a friend. And with the, with the conditions, I believe, that was set with this is that when this place was roaring with dancing and singing and cabaret shows, and I don't see that being a, being a market for that down there today. So that's one of the, one of the difficulties that I'm having. And again, people walk to the neighborhood. Everybody's out getting their exercise and walking for the night. Going out to dinner and walking home to lock the meal off, so that's, that's where I am.
I think that with things like the, the line bikes that are coming out screwed is out of the media probably tomorrow. I know, I just spent the weekend going around Quincy and using fast transit. It was kind of interesting. I felt like I was liberated and had my car. I think younger people don't necessarily bring their cars everywhere. I think that's been done. And I think the famous issue of the fact that this is a city that has a number of restaurants that are on places where there is no parking and they seem to exist. If this park, if this restaurant can't exist without a parking lot, then it's going to go out of business completely. What they could build by right there is two houses. I don't think four additional units is going to change the character of the neck. I don't think anything is going to really change the character of the neck. It's a good thing. But I don't see this as being all that real dangerous. I mean, who's really going there? It's you people. It's the people of the community, basically. It's a community restaurant. And a good one, I think, today. I tend to be in favor of splitting this up. I know we're not going to make, it's not going to make us popular, but I am to be had. Basic fan is that if you were in Quincy Point, you didn't have a parking lot, you weren't required to have a parking lot. If you were, were in, you know, other parts of the city. I always love when people talk about Bain Street in what Quincy is. It's 20, they have 20 parking spaces. And every restaurant comes to us and says, we have 20 parking spaces. Like, we're the only one in town. There's not enough parking anywhere in the city. But if people get tired of looking for parking spaces, they'll stop driving their car.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir. Is that for D to W?
I put it in there.
They have no gun.
They have no gun.
So I'm in favor of the split. Your question, okay. I'll be there.
Have a motion, sir.
Regarding case 16-086, C Street 40 LLC, Robert Galligan, manager, for variance findings or amendment decisions previously issued by the ZBA, case number 4302, and case number 08-115, which requires the lots to remain common ownership on the premises numbered 1269 C Street 40. I make a motion to grant the requested variance and finding.
Thank you. Aye.
Aye. Aye, aye. Chairman, motion adjourned? Second. Can you, Jim?
I think, I don't know. I don't think that.
Something else. Hold on a second.
So you can vote for the parking variance in addition to the condition to see if you want to. That would be it? That's what I'm just checking.